Thank you.
I think it's something important we have to...
I like the celebration.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Downtown Rotary. We're going to get started early today because we've got a great program. And we are going to have one chorus of America. Thank you.
My country is a peace, sweet land of liberty, of the icing. And where my father's land, and the blue crescent sky, from every mountainside, let freedom ring.
Please join me if you wish. We ask for prayers for Brian Rand and his family as they mourn the recent loss of Brian's father, Wayne Rand. Today we give thanks for those who are committed to education. In particular, we give thanks for our guests here today who have stepped forward to serve in promoting education in our community. Please inspire all in education to be role models and mentors for the younger generations. We pray for teachers to have the wisdom, knowledge, and skills to teach students and make their classroom places where students learn not only knowledge but also values and integrity. We ask that you strengthen all of our educational leaders with discretion, foresight, and understanding. For this, we humbly ask. Amen.
Birthdays this week. Beth Jamison, Steve Herman, Carl Zaustra, Pat Lawrence, Justin Fallon, Dave Easton, Suzanne Venus, Pete Louie, Charlotte Hofer, John Venus, John Schulte, and Kurt Laub.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mary. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much, Joel. Thank you, Mary, for being a wonderful program here for the month of May. We are going to get right to it today. And rather than having each of our guests be scheduled to be introduced, we have so many. If anybody is here as a guest at Downtown Rotary, as well as our rugby rotaries, which please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much. And I'd like to have Jack Mars from the School Board who will be facilitating the panel. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Michelle. Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of Sioux Falls Downtown Rotary, welcome to the 2017 Sioux Falls School Board Candidates Forum, featuring all four individuals seeking election to one available seat. I'm Jack Mars, a former president of the Downtown Rotary. It is my privilege to moderate this forum, introduce the candidates. In alphabetical order, Randy Dobropool, Demetrius Clearas, Cynthia Mickelson, and Carol Robinson. The top vote getter in the June 6th election will succeed Doug Morrison, whose term expires on June 30th, and there will not be a runoff election. Registered voters living within the boundaries of the Sioux Falls School District may cast an absentee ballot at the Instructional Planning Center any weekday from now through June 5th. On school election day itself, which is Tuesday, June 6th, registered voters may use any one of ten vote centers throughout the district. If you live in the district and have not yet registered to vote, you still have a few more hours to do so. Today, May 22nd, is the deadline to register to be eligible in the school election. Voter registration forms must be turned in to the respective county auditor, either Lincoln County or Minnehaha County, no later than 5:00 p.m. today. District officials anticipate a voter turnout of only 4,000 to 5,000 people, and thus they will be tabulating the ballots by hand, not by machine. A few words about the format of this discussion. Randy Dobropool, Demetrius Clearas, Cynthia Mickelson, and Carol Robinson will be questioned by me about their qualifications, involvement experience, their interest in serving, and their positions on a variety of issues involving public education and the Sioux Falls School District. The questions are mine alone and have not been shared in advance. The candidates will be allowed up to one minute for most of the answers, and we may extend the amount of time if a question is overly complicated and we're running ahead of schedule. Diane Bentley, who is seated down front, is the official timekeeper today. She will hold upside, as she showed you right now, giving the countdown to the candidates as time runs out and then finally expires. Very good, very good. Moments ago, the candidates drew to determine their seating order, and we will begin with Demetrius Clearas at this end of the table, and stagger the sequence of responses with each new question. Then about halfway through the program, the order will be reversed and we'll begin at the opposite end of the table with Randy Dobropool. We do have a lot of issues to cover. We anticipate this forum will last for about an hour, so we'll be sure to adjourn by 1:15. So let's lead off. Before we explore why you are running and the important issues at hand, I'd like each of you to take a minute to introduce yourselves. Tell us about your upbringing, your education, your college professional degrees, your work history, your family, your involvement in the community of any, and your connections to the Sioux Falls School District. We'll start with Demetrius.
Well, I'm lucky enough to be a starter in my last one. My history is, my grandparents came to this country when my dad was about 14, and they've been pretty much here in Sioux Falls since they got to this country. I'm the third, I'm the youngest of three children, and I grew up here in Sioux Falls. I went to Bancroft before I came to my country. I went to Woodyer Middle School, and I went to Washington High School, and graduated in a whole vibe. I went on to South Dakota State University and got a degree in business economics. I graduated there. I went to the Sioux Falls Police Department for a little bit after a short stint in banking. I resigned my position a couple months actually on the streets of being a cop. That just wasn't great for me, honestly. I'm a little bit too nice, I think. So after that, I'm at best by right now. I'm a certified personal trainer as well. Thank you.
So do you?
I grew up in Miller, South Dakota. I attended the University of South Dakota for Edna Mariah at the law school. I clerked at South Dakota Supreme Court for one year. Helped form the law firm of Copeland, Donahue, and Mickelson here in Sioux Falls, now known as Copeland-Hofer. Helped my husband start Mickelson and Company. Then started my own grant writing business, which I continue to do to this day. We have three sons currently in the school district, a senior and a sophomore at Lincoln High School, George and David, and a seventh grader at Patrick Henry Middle School. I've been involved in the community in various roles. I've been a board member of the Volunteering Information Center, which is now known as HELP line. I was a six-year board member of the Children's Home Society. And I've been a very active volunteer in our son's schools. I'm very passionate about this, and I really appreciate the Downtown Rotary for hosting this event and artists who stream this because I really would like more than eight out of 150 people here in this room to vote on June 6th. Thank you.
Carol?
I'm Carol Robinson. I was born and raised in northwestern Iowa. I've lived in Sioux Falls most of my adult life.
Carol, could you just hold that a little closer?
Okay. I was born and raised in Iowa. I got my bachelor's in education from White State College. Then I got a graduate teaching assistant at U.S. D.U.I., and got my master's in mathematics. I taught high school math and physics in Nebraska and South Dakota. But due to low pay in South Dakota, I left teaching and went to work for the post office as a clerk for a little more money. I've also been a paralegal. My husband and I, I've also owned and operated a business with my husband in the rural region of Alabama. And I have one daughter, Michelle, who went through the Sioux Falls school system. Last July, I retired from the post office, and now I have the freedom and opportunity to dedicate my time to the school board. Thank you.
Randy?
Good afternoon. How long have you been at Downtown Rotary for hosting this forum? Like I said, it's very important to get this information out and hopefully get that full count up. I grew up with my mom first, through those first four years of elementary school, kind of bouncing around many schools until we landed in Dolan. And that's where she met my father, who had eventually adopted me. That's where the Dobropool name comes from. So finally got some roots and got planted in Dolan. The community embraced us. And we were able to finally get through, have some solid education under my feet. We were lucky enough to get some scholarships. I was able to attend Northern State University, where I got my bachelor's in sociology and criminal justice. My family and I have been living in Sioux Falls since 2007 now. My wife currently works for the district at Hayward Elementary, and we have two sons at the elementary stages, and they attend Harvard.
Next question is a two-parter. A, what do you see as the primary roles and responsibilities of school board members? And B, what passion is it that drives you to want to serve on the school board? We'll begin with some.
Well, when I told my father I was running for the school board, he looked at me and goes, "They get yelled at more than Mark does." I would warn him. You know, I told him, I said, "Because we have three kids in our school district, and I love Sioux Falls, and I don't want Sioux Falls to become what I have determined a donate community where people who can afford to send their kids to private school or to outside surrounding communities and our public schools suffer." So that was the first question.
Well, what do you see as the role and responsibilities of the school board?
I see it as the same role as what we did at Children's Home Society and the Volunteering Information Center. We are an active cheerleader for this entity. We are there to help them and support them, lend our skills where we can do this. And one area I would really like to see is what I saw at Children's Home Society is we grew our endowment so that we are not truly held hamstrung by state and federal government funds where we can grow our funds so that we can do what we need to do as a school board. Thank you.
Carol?
The role of the school board is to help make our school district the best it can be, give the best education, and to graduate all of our students with the learning skills they need to be productive members of society. That's different for each student, so it's a really broad range. My passion is because I loved education, and so I went into education. But the, one of the problems with South Dakota is it's extremely low paid. We have to work on our budget and make sure that it's allocated to give the best education. That doesn't mean we have to pay an exorbitant price, but we have to make sure we give a good, fair price for everything we need for our students. Thank you.
Randy?
Looking at the board's roles, responsibilities, it kind of comes down to three main points. One is policies and procedures, where the board is responsible for setting those and implementing, and then have an administration follow through. Budget is the huge piece. Under this, $300 million, it's a lot, a lot to take in. So it's making sure we elect some good stewards for our school board. And then the third piece is superintendent. And he's kind of pretty much the only employee we oversee, so it's very important that we have close connections with him, making sure he's doing his due diligence throughout our district. Now, the passion piece comes just throughout my experience growing up. Like I said, we bounced around and finally figured out where we wanted to land. And that education was very, very intricate in helping me move forward. So looking at the kids in our school district today and making sure we get that equal opportunities for all our students to move forward.
Demetrius?
I agree with Randy a little. I agree with Randy. It's a very important budgetary is the objective. The objective reason is this, we're there to decide budget and to put in policy, and it will best work for us. We want to get our students to succeed. Outside of that, though, is that we are working with the superintendent. We are also, though, working with the students and teachers. But it is our job to be sure the students and teachers are successful in their roles, whether that's giving the teachers the two properties they need to succeed or getting our graduation rate up, which is 80%, you know, or around 80%. That's 20% students, 20 out of every 100 that are not graduating, and I think that's a real concern. And my passion is to see the future generations succeed, and if that's staying here to help out our community, is staying here. But regardless of whatever those students, I want them to pursue that and be successful in whatever walk of life they choose to do. And 80% graduation rate, I don't think is very effective in doing so for all the students that we have here in Sioux Falls School District.
The next question will start with Carol. The Sioux Falls School District has nearly 25,000 students from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, about 3,300 employees, and an annual budget of $300 million. How have you prepared yourself, and what qualifies you to be one of five people responsible for oversight of South Dakota's largest school district? Carol?
I don't have an accounting degree, but in a small way, I have handled the accounting of the business my husband and I operate it and his law practice. I understand where money goes, what things need to be allocated from each thing. And it's not just a dollar per student or how many employees per student. It's what each employee does for our students. And we need to value each of those employees, to make them feel worthwhile, and make the best use of every one of those $300 million that are the education of the students. Thank you.
Randy?
In my line of work, I think that's where it best suits me. I'm out there on the front lines in the trenches. I get to see pretty much the number one problem our district faces, which is poverty. And going back a little bit on that passion piece, so it is figuring out those dollars and trying to implement that a little and figure out how to be allocating funds for that early childhood piece. That's going to be a huge piece moving forward for our state in allowing, giving children that equal educational opportunities. Right now, that's where we fall short, is being able to provide that option for parents out there. If we can, if we can get that going and still, if you remember, not too long ago, we didn't have full-day kindergarten. And we finally got that implemented, and we saw some huge changes with that. So just being out on the front lines, the experience, being able to work with folks every day, day in and day out. We've got direct lines with the school district and our family. So just being able to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly, and being able to help problem solve those pieces by collaborating.
Demetrius?
He qualified on this, it's an interesting term, because I don't know that any of us have dealt with a budget so large in any of our lives. $300 million is a lot of money. I think for us, it's going to be a matter of starting at the end. And the end is what is best for our students and teachers, and going back from there and making decisions, policy, and funding wise of what projects are funding, going back and saying, okay, does this, does the money go in here for this project or for this policy? Does that contribute to the betterment of our students and our teachers overall? If it does, we put it in place, and we see how much money would be best for that policy and procedure, whether it be teacher salary, supplies, what have you. It's a matter of starting at the end and going back. Like I said, I don't know that any of us have dealt with the budget that's... I might could be wrong. One of us may have. But it's a matter of just finding out where we can probably put that money to best serve our students and teachers.
So do you?
What qualifies me, I mentioned in my opening, I'm an attorney, I'm a grant writer. I've served on other boards, Children's Home Society. There's our issues that we dealt with are very similar to many issues that the school district faced, not only the poverty, but the behavioral issues that we're facing in our district. We have 130 full-time employees who just strictly deal with behavioral issues in our district. I knew through Robert Frost, Patrick Henry, living in high school really well. But when I decided to run, I have had now probably 80 meetings since February 1st with various community leaders, school district employees, teachers, parents, to help formulate what I think moving forward, what can we do and problem solve in our district to face the poverty issues. And I formulated my plan would be workforce development, not only for the children that are in our school districts, but for the parents who are new to our community. We have an untapped resource in our community. So could we at the Jane Addams Emergency Center, at their parent universities, introduce them to Southeastern? Introduce them, you know, get them involved in that in other ways. So that's one way I would like to do that. Thank you.
The next question will first go to Randy Dobropool. How satisfied are you with the quality of public education? How satisfied are you with the quality of public education available to all children of Sioux Falls regardless of their socioeconomic status, talents within their families, and a spectrum of special needs, intellectual, emotional, social, and physical? Randy?
That's an excellent question, but I got brought up. The school district is doing great right now. We've got a lot of programs that attract kids to different schools throughout our system. Through open enrollment, children are able to go to some of these specialized schools, for lack of a better term, I guess. So like Spanish immersion, Eugene Field has, has the arts and, and once you get into, you know, high school, you've got New Tech High, those pieces. So those that are able to do that are, that's great and it's phenomenal. What I want to look at are those other buildings that are losing those, that enrollment piece. How can we keep the attraction there, draw the attraction in to make sure all our schools are equal and we're able to provide the same opportunities for all our students in our district?
Dimitris?
I think that we're doing a pretty good job overall. It's tough to say when we see that our, like I said, immersion coursework, our emerging students, I should say, are suffering. Our multiple elementary schools are somewhat suffering, especially with that immersion program. We have 38.4% graduation rate from native parents in this, in the Sioux Falls School District. That's not a very good number at all. So we are absolutely doing some good things. I mean, I'm not going to say we aren't, but there's a lot of work to be done, especially with multicultural students and making things available and being sure that we're pushing these kids to make it to class and get the education that they deserve. They're cute for a reason. Let's give them the education that these students all deserve.
So, dear?
And looking at the quality, I like looking at numbers, look at where our school district is going to be, not just where it is even today. And I find an interesting fact right now, if you look, it says where you have 44% free and reduced lunch in our district, but if you look at just elementary, it's a 49%. And you look at the graduation rate, yes, we're, but Lincoln High School was 76. So one under four, you know, that's, we need to work on some things in our district. So how do we meet those problems? And one of those ways is, you know, George McGovern is a middle school way on the west side of town, was built, it's a beautiful building, it's one mile from the city bus. The demographics it serves, they, parents can't get there for meetings, the kids can't stay for after-school activities. We, why weren't we working more with the city to see what that was? And I met, or I spoke with Sandra Millicott from the city, who runs Sam's program, and he said that, which is the busing, it's not even on the future to a year plan. So how do we solve that problem? Algebra II is a breaking point for a lot of high school students in our high school. How can we better incorporate that to make it a success rate instead of a lost hope that they drop out of school? How can we meet that need? That's another way I'd like to look at the quality.
Carol?
Okay. One of the things with the special needs of the students, we need to assess our students and make sure that they are ready and capable of handling the classroom that they're placed in. They have to be able to communicate and have the dexterity that they need for their placement. If a child cannot function where they're placed, if they don't have those skills before they get there, they're not going to learn more because they're just there. That's what they're going to be there, just going to be sitting in that room. We have to make sure that our students are properly placed. They need the extra help so they can be in the right, they can progress from there. And we've got to get that help for them. The poverty level, I was in the poverty level growing up. My parents were kind of farmers, but that didn't affect education and it, we need to work so that it does not affect education. That's not the priority. Poverty and education are not disassociated.
Dimitris, you'll get the next question first. How necessary and effective are the district's many specialized programs and alternative school offerings such as pre-K, Three Levels of Spanish Immersion, The Challenge Center, Middle School Emergence Center, Career Technical Education Academy, New Technology High, and the Alternative High School?
That is a lot of, seeing that question with in terms of how many different programs we have, I think they're very necessary. And I actually, I was digging, because I, in the last forum I mentioned that I can think pre-K was a big combination as kindergarten, elementary school, middle school. And I was digging a little bit and I decided I could change my position on that. It looks like pre-K is vital to the development of young, of young kids. So I think all those are very important. I have some friends that work with the Emergence Center and these kids are coming in from some of their other countries and they have to learn a whole new language and a whole curriculum. And to do those both simultaneously is very difficult. So they need the proper steps in those programs to keep with it, to keep with learning English, understanding English better so that they can keep up with their schoolwork. Now, we have kids that come in at a very young age and that's great for them. But then we have kids who come as a sophomore or a junior in high school who have to catch up so fast with the curriculum and the English language so that they can actually just graduate in ten years.
So, dear?
I think they're necessary and effective for a very large school district. We have to meet the needs of all of our kids because it's our obligation to educate all of our children. And so we don't have, not all children are the same. So we have to meet their needs because we all know, keeping them in school is going to lead to a better success. You know, a high school graduate will make at least a million dollars more over their career than a high school dropout. Over 25, 40 years, depending on what stats you look at, a high school dropout costs our community $500,000. So there's a big community investment in keeping our kids in school. So having these specialized programs, coding to the future, starting out at three of our Title I elementary schools, I think it's exciting. Because we need to meet these kids. And I touched a little bit on the Algebra II issue. I was out at New Tech High last week and how they teach Algebra II and they combine computer science and one other class and make it hands-on and project-based, those kids weren't saying, "I'm never going to use this again," and then it came to med school.
Carol?
Okay. All of the parts of the pre-K through the technical school are an important part to the education for our students. Each student has different needs and each student has different goals. The technical, a lot of students want to go to college and become a professional. Many students don't fit in there. But each student needs to be acknowledged and feel that they are worthy of an education. They need that self-worth instilled in them from the teachers, from their educational programs. If they've got the self-worth, they're going to want to learn, they're going to want to be somebody. And that's the job of our public school is to give that self-worth and respect to each child so they can respect themselves enough to stay in school and graduate and become successful.
Randy?
I'll try to work my way, hopefully we'll get to high school through these steps. But right again, right away again, early childhood is a huge piece that we need to start looking at statewide, not just talking Sioux Falls. Studies are there, development, the developmental piece is so, so crucial with habits, personality, picking up the pieces of reading, writing, to allow them to move that forward. And if they're not given that opportunity right away, they're going to fall short, they're going to fall behind and then they're playing catch-up that whole elementary, through those whole elementary years. The elementary stages through the specialized schools is, I think, is great and it attracts kids, it keeps them engaged. And I love the idea of coding to the future, which Cynthia brought up. It's going to be a huge piece and I hope it attracts those, some other kids to, and keeps those kids in the neighborhood schools. At middle school, we do have to, and I'm excited about this, because they are going to start moving ELL and immersion centers to a couple different schools. So we're not just bussing one population off to one school. So I'm really excited that they start looking at that.
Dimitris? Randy, you want to go again? Don't cut me off this up. So go to Cynthia first. If elected, what legislative and regulatory agenda would you promote with the South Dakota State Legislature and with Governor Dugard?
Well, that makes it interesting because I've talked about, my husband Mark is in the legislature, but I've talked a lot about workforce development, but I'm going to hit it again. It's just such an important, important piece to, I think, meeting all of our kids in our school district. We have a 2% unemployment rate in Sioux Falls, so there is a need for good owners, whatever relevance they are. So what does that mean in terms of a creative and governmental role? I think we, as a school district, need to keep working and making sure we're communicating with the legislature, with the government, to make sure we understand what their needs are and they understand what ours are. And getting on the same page, pre-K, I'm with Randy on this one, you know, I think it's exciting that the legislature is doing a memorandum, I believe, on the pre-K program brought by Senator Billy Sutton. Because it, by the age of third grade, it's proven if students don't have their reading and math schools, their rate of dropping out increases dramatically. Thank you.
Carol?
We need to work with the legislature to make sure that they have to give us, one thing would be funding that they have out of control, the funding they have control of, that we get the appropriate share of that so we can use that for our school projects. That any bill affecting the schools, whatever it may be, that we analyze the bill, that we work with the legislature to help write, if they want to write a bill about something on the school, that we offer our services, that we want to have input so that they have a feedback from the largest school district in the state about what's needed here, not to belittle any of the smaller schools, their schools are just as important. But that we work with them to get the right legislature to help all of the students.
Randy?
Moving, moving forward with the legislature, it will be about creating positive relationships and having a good dialogue back and forth. Look, we're all, there's always so much money to go around. And budgets get tight and you, maybe it's starting to look at the funding formula that comes down for students from the state. Because the key will be that early childhood, how we get, how we can get that to move forward. The, the other piece is, look, we're the, we're here to create the best well-rounded students we can, not just in Sioux Falls, but statewide. We know South Dakota has the morals and the ethics to do it. We just need to start looking at the resources, how we can pull those resources together, get creative, to be able to move that needle and hopefully be able to break that generational poverty line. And to do that, we got to start looking at wages as well, wages in town and throughout South Dakota. We can create the best well-rounded students you want, but if the wages aren't there, we're not going to move the needle.
Dimitris?
Same for me, I kind of hit on it a little bit before and that is about multicultural students. We have a growing, growing population of multicultural students here in town and we're not, I think we're not taking care of them. The parents are coming here to have a better life for their, for their kids, for their families and just coming here and thinking they're already getting that mark a little bit, but I think the kids are getting that line. And the kids should be coming here to make that better life living now, but I think that just with all the struggles that they have sometimes coming into this new culture, this new school, this new language, everything being new to them, I think even the first generation of kids that are here are thinking, "Well, I can make it better for my kids." You know, and I don't, I don't want that gap. They're here for a reason, let's give these kids the best that we can and let's get them to be part of our society and get the education that they deserve so they can, their kids can be more successful than they were. I think multicultural students are, are the ones that are getting kind of up in the dust and I'd like to see us pick up this slack on them a little bit more.
Next question will first go to Carol. What about student behavior disruptions and discipline? How are these problems distracting from classroom teaching and learning? What more, if anything, can and should be done? Carol?
Okay. One of the things that I said before was we need to get the students having a good positive attitude about themselves. When a student has a good positive attitude about themselves, their behavior improves. When they're in the proper setting and they're, they've given, been given the right training so they can be in that setting, their behavior improves. A child who doesn't understand anything going on in the classroom is going to be a problem. So we have to meet that goal and that's going to improve the behavior of all of our students. Discipline, we need to be fair and judicious with that, not just for across the board. We have to address the problems of each student to discipline them, just like you do your own child. There's a way, you have to reach that each child.
Randy?
There's no doubt behaviors are a challenge for our district. I get to listen to it just about every day when my wife comes home. She's at Hayward, it's this Title I building that struggles with, with behaviors. And, but she, she breaks it down for me and tells me what they're able to do to get through the process. So I know the district is doing a due diligence on it. I'm going to roll that kind of as the community piece. It's, it's not just a school district problem and we got to look at it as a community. So what I'd be mindful of is getting involved, being able to offer some mentoring to some, maybe it's, it's getting, getting in and offering a parent mentoring, one-on-one, getting, possibly introducing parenting classes throughout the community. And being able to then get those children properly diagnosed would be a huge step moving forward as well and making sure they're receiving the services that they need in our district.
Dimitris?
Like Randy there said, diagnosis is huge. And I was on the PD for very long, but I was able to go over to some of these kids that are struggling in school. And it was, I think you had it rough sometimes and you, it was heartbreaking to see the situation some of these kids are in. And so behavior issues I think stem from a lot of things. Could be something that they need to be diagnosed with, it could be home life, you know, and and what Randy said too, is getting the community involved and talking with these parents and creating a better life for these students at home and in school because this isn't, this isn't all just school, it's coming from somewhere. I want, I want to communicate with these kids and these parents and hopefully get these kids on the right track. Because punishment, for punishment's sake, in my opinion, doesn't, you can't just punish these kids and all things are better, they were punished, they learned their lesson, they did. We need to talk with them and we need to, we need to get involved in their family life, which some might not like, but I think it's going to help in the long run. If we can do that, put some sort of policy in place where we can get these kids home lives and try and help them out on a deeper level.
So, dear?
I think consistency and follow-through throughout our district is an important feature. I have New Tech High, they, the students write their own code of conduct and they're, they buy into it and they have no behavior issues. So how can we start at the elementary issue and get the parents and kids, right now if there's code of conduct, we all sign something on our computer and do that, but make it really aware to both these parents and the kids what they are expected at school and they know what are the consequences. That would be my first step. Second, right now we have Horst Manzridges Elementary School, it's on 26th Street. It's does the point of trying to modify behavior. I'm Ms. Tara Eckstein and I was very interested in this program because being formerly a member of the Children's Home Society. My question to her at the end was, "How long does it take you to modify behavior using this immersion program?" And she said, "It takes 18 to 24 months." My next question was, "What if they're a fifth grader and they come here and they only get nine or 10 months? Is there a transitional period for that fifth, sixth grader, almost seventh grader?" And she said, "No, we need to look into that." Thank you.
We're going to reverse the order for the remainder of the programs. We're going to start with Randy and then move to this person toward, toward Randy. How can the district recruit and retain the best and brightest professional educators and staff, including teachers, counselors, social workers, principals, and other administrators? Randy?
Well, I think it's showing them what a great community that we have to offer them is going to fall in there. So just being able to give, give them examples of how well we're doing throughout, throughout our district. We can, we can look at budget pieces as well. I would, I would encourage them to look into the different options they have as well, moving in with, in with the district as far as what groups they're able to get involved with, where they're able to get some help or if they want, just to be able to reach out and see what's available here. So I think once they get to know us, they're not going to want to leave us. The other thing is I'm really excited about is this Grow Our Own program that they, that they're going to implement. And if you look at the, the ratios right now for, for our student, per, per students and our staff, it's, it's a little off. So I'm hoping we can get our, our kids, encourage them into, into education and get them to come back.
Dimitris? No, I'm sorry, go to, go to Carol, I'm sorry.
Okay. Like Randy said, Sioux Falls is a great community to live in and that's one of the things. and that's one of the things that we have to use as a recruit, one of our big recruiting toys, to get good educators and staff members with our schools. Retention comes also from the community. We can work with the school, to work more with the community, to have the community offer incentives to the teachers to be here. It might not be a big thing, even if it's a little discount at a store or some other projects. Possibly even this community of Sioux Falls could come up with a project of giving loans to students who want to go to college and become teachers here at a good rate. It can be a complicated thing, but it would be a workable thing.
Sofia.
You bet. It's all about culture and making sure the teachers have good morale. You know, the many teachers that I've spoken to, it's not, you know, to pay, we'd all like to get paid more, but it's being feel supported and have morale in their buildings. Some buildings are doing a fantastic job, some maybe are struggling right now. So it's about mentoring, having the veteran teachers mentor the younger teachers. We have an instructional coach program throughout the district, I think is fabulous, works with the younger teachers or maybe somebody teaching a new subject. I would love to see something where more volunteers in our community, not just parents, get involved. For example, reading, some schools, they don't have parents or grandparents that can come in there and read, students who struggle to read, to help that teacher out, to pull these students out. Something that can be organized there, because that school might not even have a PTA to get something like that organized. That would be something, not using even dollars, just using more volunteers. Also a structure of some kind where we could ask for donations. Hayward needs a hundred dollars in arts supplies, we could get that out to the community. We have such a generous community, we just need to tap more of those resources. Thank you.
Demetrius.
I would say the easiest answer is A first and foremost. I think that helps with retention of getting people to come, to realize that we aren't just a place where they can be, maybe more just one state over in Iowa. I think freedom, freedom is good for teachers, freedom to teach their lesson plan, how they want to teach it, get their points across, and as long as we're getting the results, obviously, and that comes also to innovation. I think the teacher should be allowed to explore different teaching methods that they think would work for them, that they think it would help them. Because I think when a teacher's innovative, they have more passion in their teaching. I can remember my science grade, her science teacher in eighth grade, Mr. Enn, he was probably one of the only passionate teachers that I had, and he made it fun. And when you're having fun, in my experience, you learn better. You're more of a sponge, you're not even thinking about it, but you're learning a lot more. And something I'd like to see maybe with that is us doing workshops or teachers teaching teachers, because I think there are teachers that seem sometimes like they're just standing up there, they're pointing at the board and talking with their nose, and we have those teachers who really get everybody involved. And I think when you get teachers who get everybody involved to help out other teachers, I think that would be really something cool if we could start here.
Next question will go first to Carol. There is growing racial, ethnic, and religious diversity among the district's students, but there is much less diversity among the district's educators and staff. Is that diversity gap a concern? And if so, would you and how would you make the workforce more reflective of the community's overall makeup?
Our community is growing in its diversity, but the outward appearance of our staff doesn't reflect that. But if we have good staff that are truly dedicated educators, they are not going to, they are going to give each child the best education possible. They don't look at the child other than they are a child that they want to instruct. They want that child to succeed. That is the kind of teachers and educators we need in our school district. Those that believe in each and every child, and if they do, that's the diversity that comes out and are without prejudice, without anything holding them back, the love of each student, not what color the teacher is.
Sofia.
The district has addressed this, or is addressing this issue in their strategic plan. They've made this one of their focus of their strategic plan. And they're addressing this through the Grow Your Own program that Randy mentioned, which I think is a great idea to, they're including children and even mentoring them and exposing them to what does a teacher do on a daily basis and so forth. And this is positive in two ways, it will help grow our district and hopefully retain it, but it will grow our diversity within our district as well. And it allows for more positive role models for all of our students in our district. But we always have to remember, we will not sacrifice quality to make a number. We're going to always keep the quality of our education important. We're going to try to grow this in a way that we can meet a better reflection of our community as well. Thank you.
Demetrius.
I think the diversity gap is an concern, and I'm glad it's being addressed, and it needs to be addressed even more as time goes forward. We see that, I think part of it will correct itself because we are becoming more diverse, and those people are graduating from our schools, and they're going to want to come back. So I think part of it will fix itself in time, but in a manner of more immediate, we need to make it more than ever because I think it helps those who are coming from other countries to see a teacher standing up there who has lived the life that they've lived or gone through the same experience that they've gone through. It makes you more empathetic and more believable that, hey, I can do what this person's doing or I can make something of myself from where I came from. And a lot to be said, I think, you know, you don't want to acknowledge that somebody of a different culture necessarily is going to have that effect, but it helps seeing people to think culture flourish and doing better and teaching out there, and teaching you and maybe can reach you better. And if that, having more diverse faculty and staff reaches more students because they're coming from that same background, I think that's the main thing, that's the important reason for it.
Randy.
Demetrius hit the nail on the head right there. There's studies out there that prove you can get a kid in front of a teacher or educator of the same race, culture, his likelihood of graduating and going on to be successful skyrockets. And as part of that piece here, like he said as well, we're going to hopefully correct it eventually, but looking at it right now, the district put it in that strategic plan, and looking at how we can help that grow immediately is going to be a huge piece moving forward. We're looking at pretty close to, it's like ninety-six percent, I believe, ninety-eight maybe even. So for me, that's a huge red flag that we need to start identifying some of those, and hopefully recruiting some of those teachers to come to Sioux Falls and stay in Sioux Falls. That could get back to that recruiting piece, maybe it's, maybe they're not wanting to come to Sioux Falls. Their heart might be in it, but if I invest ten thousand dollars more across the border, my heart can still be in.
Next question will first go to Cynthia. If elected, you'll help decide whether Superintendent Ryan Maher is offered another contract in three years. What is your assessment of Dr. Maher's performance so far? And what is your level of confidence in the other four school board members within whom you will serve?
He just left, that's not fair. Dr. Maher has done an excellent job, I believe, in doing something I talked about we need to do with the legislature is communicate. He's listened, he's met with many people within the district. Our, I can't remember the poll they did, but the teachers themselves, the other administrators within the district feel that they are being listened to in a very positive way. So that's excellent. He has drafted a strategic plan with the board, and I think he's identified where we need to move forward and improve our quality. Like in high school, they needed a new principal, our graduation rate was the lowest, seventy-six percent. He's hiring a principal that's coming in there, that's, he changed the school from forty-four to sixty-six percent in a few years. So he's doing a great job. I know all the board members well, I think they work well as good as a team, and I hope so.
Demetrius.
I think Dr. Maher's doing a good job as well, seeing those problems and addressing them right away, I think is very important, obviously hoping not too much of a snap judgment, we want to be sure that we give the best information before we're making those judgments. Really, I'm kind of somebody who likes to be a little bit more aggressive and stir a pot a little bit, so I like to try and put up new ideas, and that's what I think we're all up here for, is that we hope that we bring ideas to the school board that maybe are not there right now. And that I think involves a little bit of shaping things up. So I'm confident that any of us would do a very good job on the school board, but like to shake things up and like to present new ideas and hopefully a little bit, a little progressive ideas that we can get better teachers, better results from what we're getting right now.
Randy.
I think Dr. Maher's done a wonderful job and has been kind of refreshed and brought there for a lot of our educators in the school system, a lot of our parents in the community, and I think as a community members as well. And the thing that stands out to me is he's open, he's transparent, he puts the plan out there and he listens to your input, he's offered input sessions, he's offered you the opportunity to come and speak your voice. So he's listening, and those are basically the main reasons why I'm running this school board, is to be open and to listen and to collaborate with community members, parents, educators. Because that's going to be key to moving this district from great to excellent. And the other piece is, I really feel he's got that global thinking perspective where he just, I would hate to play chess with him, because I think he's probably got about twenty to thirty moves ahead. So that's what I really like to see is just the way his brain operates and moving forward.
Carol.
Okay, Dr. Maher seems to be a very open person. He's got strong Midwestern values, which are reflective of Sioux Falls. Not a native, but he's from Nebraska, so it's kind of close. He seems to have very good ideas. I cannot promise what will happen in the next three years, but if he keeps up the work he's doing, I think it would remain an asset to the Sioux Falls School District. The present school board is also, they work very hard. It's a very hard, thankless job I think that the school board members have. Most people don't even have a clue until they start looking at it, what they actually are involved in. And I think I could add to the school board and become a working part of it. Thank you.
Demetrius will take this question first. What is your position on school choice? Should the Sioux Falls School District embrace or resist education vouchers and charter schools?
Resist, 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 resist. I think we all kind of set our piece on that in the last forum as well, and everybody gave the same answer today. I am against the voucher system. I don't believe in it, I think it's important to have school choice, but at the same time, the voucher system is just not feasible for everybody, and it's something that we need to, we just need to do the best job, I think we need to make it so that our public school system is the best regardless, regardless of what school you're going to, if it's Lincoln, Washington, or you have your private ones like O'Gorman. I want, I think I said in the last forum too, I want to be anti those private schools. I want a public school system to be so good that kids want to be like, maybe I'll leave O'Gorman but I want a public school system because of their education, because of their different arts programs, their sporting programs, they're doing such a great job that they're the best option for me, and they're where I can be most successful and go for going forward here.
Randy.
I'm against it as well, like Demetrius said, and we all rejected the idea of the last forum. And the key pieces for me is it creates an uneven playing field. We've got, throughout the nation, you look statistically, ninety percent of our population attends public schools. And here in Sioux Falls, we've got an open enrollment policy, which already kind of creates that choice for our parents in which school they want to choose. And so the key for me is focusing on all our schools then, how do we keep every school attractive? And that gets down to the equal in educational opportunity for all our students, to make sure those neighborhoods stay attractive for the kids in that school district, so they're not openly enrolling out. So we already have that kind of setup here in Sioux Falls. So adding the, and then adding a piece onto it, what you got to look at is it's going to start pulling funding away from some of the crucial programs like SPED programs, and even some of the specials that we're able to offer in those open enrollment pieces.
Carol.
Okay, said all of the, voiced against the vouchers, I still. The money and the funding should remain, not be divided and given to charter schools. We should work to have our public schools the best they can be and use those funds to do that. Also, the parents that are so involved in, any problems with the school, get involved in our public school and make them better, places where they need to leave their improvements. If all of those people put their efforts and funding into the public school, the whole school system's going to be better, and especially in Sioux Falls, we have great schools. We don't, we shouldn't have to divvy up those funds to other schools. And it will be best for our school and our students.
Sofia.
I'm against vouchers, and I believe it's our government's duty and obligation to provide education for all students, so to then provide vouchers, we will diminish the quality of our education in our public schools, so that's a short answer, that's all.
Okay. Then let's, we'll have that, right? Let's ask another quick question, then. Do you agree with the school district calendar committee's recommendation to begin the 2018-2019 school year on Thursday, August 23rd? Randy.
I agree with the committee being developed, and I'm glad that it got developed so we don't have to vote on the start date every year. And what I like about it is it does offer input from the community and the parents. And going through this year, these last couple of years, starting after Labor Day and getting out after Memorial Day, I have to say I have not liked it as a parent. Starting a little bit earlier, I think that's what it all came down to, was just that little piece of negotiation. And so I think they came up with part of that negotiation, and so I like how we ease the students in and give them a break, and kind of gets their gears ready and gets them kind of figure out, oh yeah, we got to go back to school here. And so I think that's going to help coming up with that new calendar.
You agree?
So I agree.
Carol.
I think this is a good time to start school, and I'm glad it was decided on by the method that it was included, it was a thoughtful decision, it wasn't just, this is the way it's going to be. It's, the school's start and end dates should be a decision that's reached between the administration and the parents, and to make the most reasonable accommodation for everybody. And I think this was a well thought of, well presented, and solution to our starting calendar.
Sofia.
As a parent, I guess I would have preferred the Monday, August 27th date, which was one that was thrown out as well, because it gave one more weekend for parents. And that Thursday, August 23rd date did not make semester tests before Christmas, so we're still having them after Christmas, so it didn't solve that issue as well. So that would have been my preference if I was a voting member of the board. I do like that we, how the committee did actually take input and was brought together, it wasn't a three-year calendar, it was just a one-year calendar as done in the past. The other issue that I thought was interesting to me that I found out through all my meetings is, at CTE, we sell seats to surrounding school districts like Harrisburg and West End and so forth, and we were losing some of those seats being sold because our calendar was so far up in their schools, because they were starting two weeks before us, and what were those students supposed to do for those timeframes, and same on the end, when they had already graduated, were they supposed to go out to CTE and finish that class? So we did need to get a better line.
Demetrius.
One thing I definitely agree with Cynthia on with that is the semester test issue. And that is, I can see the argument both ways with the semester test, because you can argue that if students truly retain the information they learned in the semester, whether it's before or after, Christmas break will not matter. It's one of those things though where I personally think that it should be before Christmas break. I think that starting earlier is great, but also puts the effect of the semester test setup at a terrible time, unfortunately, being right after the Christmas vacation. I think it's something to look at. I think that, for, well, it's best for our students, and to be honest with you, I also think that this would be, I think they get like some student council involved in it, see what they think and see why they think, obviously if they're just like, oh, I want to start later, so I have more in my summer, you know, that's not a very good reason, but, you know, students can bring a lot to the table, I think, and to get their input, I think would be really beneficial to our overall process of deciding the calendar year in this district. But, you know, students can bring a lot to the table, I think, and to get their input, I think, would be really beneficial to our overall process of deciding the calendar year in this decision.
Let's move to the final question, and we're gonna, Randy, start off here, and then move this way. Let's take a minute, we'll give you a minute and a half on this final. What makes you the best, most qualified candidate in the field? How would your election make a positive difference for the community at large and for all children of the Sioux Falls School District? Randy?
All right. Well, thanks again for, we're gonna wrap it up. Thanks again for hosting us, we really appreciate it. I've been telling you guys from day day one, when we set out on this adventure a couple of years ago, that we're in for the right reasons, we're in this line of work. My family and I, we're, we get out on the front lines, not just per, not just professionally, but personally as well. We volunteer in a lot of different activities throughout throughout the community, a lot of different programs. I did mentoring the last nine years, do the L S S mentoring program, been involved with Big Brothers, Big Sisters as a big to a kid who first he's moved to Brandon, so we don't get to hang out as much, but we still get to connect every now and then. It's been a huge, huge piece in his life. He's a, he's, he's been growing, he's a, he's a star. And also through, I, he's through county, working with the county, I get the opportunity to work as a government co-chair for the United Way here in town, which is a huge, huge piece for our community, which raises over ten million dollars and helps support over forty programs that that directly do involve a lot of these children we're talking about, a lot of our students that we need to get on the right back on the right track. So we're doing it personally and professionally, and we're in the line of work. My wife is with the district, which I think is a huge, huge thing as well. She, I get to hear the direct contact, the direct stories, what's going on, what's working, what, you know, her her feelings from other teachers, other educators in the in the system. And so the the huge piece, the biggest difference, I think, is just that overall interaction that I have with community and and the different resources we have throughout town.
Carol?
I have been an educator, I was trained in education, I've been through this system, I've worked in very small schools and larger schools. I understand how it works from the teaching side. I have, understand the legal side of it, and fairly know for over forty years. I've run a business, I understand financial implications of decisions. I work well with people, I interact well with people and share, share ideas. I don't expect to express my viewpoints every single time. I wanna share my viewpoints, but I wanna hear viewpoints of the other people and the community members, so that I can bring those to the table with the other board members. I'm forthright and honest, and I believe in the education of our youth, and I think they're our future, and that's where we need to put our support, behind our our children.
Sodhi?
Well, I'm I'm a great listener, just ask my husband. I'm also a problem solver. I had a great mentor, Rich Cutler, when I first started practicing law, and he said, don't be a lawyer who just tells your client the problem, you have to come with a solution. And that's how I've just held my career and my life, is that I'm not gonna come with a problem and not have an answer, I'm gonna have a solution. And I, that's what I feel as a board member I need to be able to do. I'm approachable, I love Sioux Falls, I've had children now in each level of the school district, so I think I have a really good aerial view of where where there might be gaps in our educational process. Tenacious, I do not give up. Community engagement is a very big key to me for the Sioux Falls School Board. We have, I hadn't looked at the school district as a whole to look at, is it a charitable entity? It's not for nonprofit, but they have, because they have to do that to, to free ourselves to be able to go forward and make the education what we need to do. And many people, including Sioux Falls, there are so many great entities here in Sioux Falls that we just need to make sure we have good collaboration with, that we get them engaged, and get everybody on the same table and page and communicate. And I think I have three great priorities that I'm focused on, vertical integration of our curriculum.